All right. It is seven o'clock. We will call the meeting order and announce that there is a forum present. At this time, I would ask Councilman Niffen if he would lead us in a word prayer place.
Father of heaven, thank you for this day and your opportunity to come together and do business with people in the city of Clyde. Ask you to be with us, Lord, bless us, give us your wisdom when we make decisions. Lead guidance and guidance against our sins in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. Now, if you join us for the pledge, allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Sit down. At this time, I would open up our meeting to council announcements. This is an opportunity for council to share with everyone anything that's on their hearts or minds right now. Counsel?
I have something to say as a, because I'm a nurse. One of the big principles, major principles of healthcare is prevention and early detection and treatment. In this season where we are inundated with a virus that we can't see, I would encourage our citizens to protect yourselves in every way that you can, but if you become symptomatic, don't wait at home. Go be seen so that you can have early detection and early treatment. That's it.
Thank you for that. All right. Seeing no other comments, we'll close council comments. We'll move to public comments. This is an opportunity for you, the public, to stand up, be recognized, and pretty much have your say for about three minutes on anything you'd like, other than personnel or matters under litigation at this time. Oh, Mr. Houston, please join us up here front.
I shall. This is regarding the intersection of 18 Hayes Row, or I'm not sure where it changes to South Forest from Highway 18.
It's 18 all the way through town as far as I'm concerned.
Anyway, we've kicked around the idea, the cities kicked around the idea, it'll be up to, I'm sure, Texas at the very end, one of the stoplights there coming into Clyde or a flashing signal or what. I'd rather roll the lot. I think from driving, rolling the lot, it'd be better to have just a flashing yellow light coming into Clyde from 18 because it's 170 yards or so from the speed limit across from 55, that knoll and that curve until you get right down there to that intersection instead of a stoplight there. Because you come over there and all of a sudden there could possibly be cars there, and you stop, brake, but then have a stop sign from Hayes Row across the tracks as it is now. Just, of course, Texas, I'll have the final award and all that, but I think that would be more appropriate than trying to put a stoplight there and trying to leave out stuff. I'm more concerned about the stopping and coming over that rise than running through the intersection. So, it doesn't matter. They get behind the wheel, they'll hit you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. These are very good, very good point. Thank you. Any other, any other public comment at this time? If not, I'll close the public comments section. We will move on over to 6.0, which is our consent agenda. Council's had an opportunity to look over our consent agenda. At this time, if there's no questions or anything to pull off, then I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda in the minutes from our regular meeting on June 23rd.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Niffen, seconded by Councilwoman Kaufman. All those in favor? Pastor Nanusky, thank you all very much. We'll move on to 7.0. This is a presentation by Cameron Gully, our CPA, providing the financial audit report for the fiscal year 2018-2019 for the City of Clyde. Ms. Gully?
Thank you all. I don't know if y'all have had a chance to review this. I brought this to y'all before y'all's last meeting, the proposal had such a long agenda that was put on this one.
Yes, sorry about that.
No, that's fine with me. You didn't hurt my feelings one bit. But, so this is a, is a much better presentation relative to the financial condition of the City of Clyde than last year's presentation was. And there's, there's a one main reason for that, and that is y'all did not buy much water from the City of Abilene this year like you did last year. Your water rate structure was not built to have to buy water from Abilene. And so, last year, it really, really, really had a negative impact on your financial position relative to the utility fund. This year, if you, if you look in the income statement of the utility fund on page 18, you'll see right towards the middle of the, just below the very center of the page where it says water purchases. Y'all bought this year $193,000 worth of water from the City of Abilene. And you put the third to last line item on that page, your surplus this year was $200,000. Last year, you had a really large deficit, and a really large deficit that you had was due to the water that was bought from the City of Abilene. And looking at my notes here, the water purchased this year was $721,000 less than it was last year. Y'all bought nearly a million, a million dollars worth of water from Abilene last year, so that just dipped into your equity significantly. And what that, what that did is that drove your cash position to a point last year that you could not even afford to pay the current bills being charged to y'all on a monthly basis by the City of Abilene, to the point that last year at this time, and the last year's all the presentation except September 2018, you owed the City of Abilene about $700,000 in unpaid accounts payable. Your cash position didn't really change materially for the good this year because you were spending the cash that was generated from not buying water this year to pay down that accounts payable from the previous year. And so, when you look at your balance sheet, your balance sheet really doesn't change a whole lot relative to cash. So, if you look at the utility fund balance sheet on page 17, you'll see your cash, in cash equivalents, there's only $36,000 this year. And if you look towards, just about midway through the page, under the current liabilities, you see accounts payable is $564,000. And that is still the line share of that, about, about $450,000 of that is still money owed to the City of Abilene on those old municipal water bills. So, you whittled into that quite a bit, but you used the cash generated during the current this year to pay down the prior year balances. So, that's why when you look at cash, you think, well, maybe we didn't really increase our cash at all this year, and that's the reason why. Going forward to this year, if you don't get City of Abilene fully paid off, you should get much more closely balanced out with them having completely paid off, if not totally so, right at the end of September this year. Abilene's been really nice to y'all. They have not charged y'all one penny in the liquid fees on the money owed to them. Basically, that was a free loan by the City of Abilene that came at, at the best possible time for y'all because, one, you didn't have the water to pump because your pumps were down, your station was being repaired because it had been down for so long, and, two, you didn't have the liquidity to keep it current, and probably didn't have the financial resources to pay a long-term loan to be able to do, to finance those, those water purchases. And so, as a result, City of Abilene did y'all a major favor. Looking back a couple of pages, page 13, this is going to be the balance sheet of the general fund, and then your couple of special revenue funds that you have, your MEOs fund, which is $20,000, and the general fund, which is per, how many pages, 13, is, cash balances there are $161,000. The general fund is pretty current relative to, you know, its cash balances don't tie to your fund balance, which is the next to last line, fund balance of the general fund is only $45,000. And the reason being is because of accounts payable owed by the general fund for unpaid accounts payable. Most of that's going to be monies owed to the state for the recorded files that we do, that were paid in October, though aren't really any of the old balances in the general fund, it's just there was a lot owed as of the end of the fiscal year. And if you turn to page, page 15, you'll see the income statement of the general fund. And even though your fines made up a significant proportion of the costs on expenditures in the municipal court, which, if you look in the middle, towards the middle of the page, you see the core expenditures for the year were $241,000. That's kind of a good thing because that means, on the flip side, you're generating a lot of fines revenue, of which y'all did this year. Y'all's fine revenue this year went up significantly from what they were the year before, and so when you look at fines towards the top of the page on the revenue section, your fines this year were $331,000. So, y'all had a much better revenue stream generated from the police department relative to charging fines and fees off the interstate primary line, which is where the bulk of those traffic citations come from. You see the property taxes throughout the top, property taxes and sales taxes, property taxes were $967,000. You had an increase this year in property taxes because your valuation went up, and so your, your property taxes from the devaluations cost of those revenues to be higher this year, not by a significant amount, but about $65,000, about, not quite, not quite, well, about 6% increase in property taxes from last year to this year. Sales tax revenues were a lot higher this year than last year. Sales tax this year were $570,000, and they were higher this year than last by $43,000. For this year, I would not expect to see those continue to grow except for new businesses because COVID, you know, most municipalities are seeing a slight decline at best in sales tax revenues collected, and I would expect that to continue for y'all as well. And for how much longer that's going to happen, we just don't know. And as a result of the COVID pandemic, I did put a footnote caveat in the financial statements relative to that on page 38 in the subsequent footnote footnote. And it's the second paragraph on page 38 that says, "The COVID-19 pandemic sweeping across the country has resulted in the mandatory closure of many businesses during the months of March, April, and May 2020, resulting in layoffs of much of the workforce. The economic effects of those closures is not yet known, but could potentially affect collectibility of future revenue billings, tax assessments, sales tax revenues, and franchise tax fees of the city due to the significant economic impact on unemployment for the city's customers and taxpayers." And that's just a generic statement because we just don't know how broad and widespread the long-term effects of this is going to be. And so, as a reader, particularly the people that they owe money to are the bondholders and the lenders, the bank. They need to know that, you know, while things may look pretty good right now, we don't know how long and how drastic the effects of the closures, the shutdowns, the less incapacitable holdings of restaurants and other types of establishments might be to the long-term viability of the revenues. And so, you know, I would expect, as you begin to build your budget for the 2020, 2021 year, it's going to be really hard to target revenue because you just don't know where this is going to go and for how much longer it's going to go. And so, you know, do your best, is all I can say, with the expectation not to try to overreach on expenditures particularly. Because I would err on the side of caution on expenditures when your revenue is so much influx. And so, that's just something I would be cautioned not to do. I don't have the answers for that, unfortunately. I don't know that anybody does. But the general fund held its own pretty well. And if you look at the budget comparison schedule of the general fund, it's going to be just behind the footnote on page, page 40. There are going to be a lot of negative budget variances in the expenditure portion, and I'll explain why, particularly in the fire department. You look at the fire department budget right just towards the middle of the page on page 40, fire department budget was $86,000. And you see, y'all had expenditures there of over half a million dollars, and you have the budget variance there of $258,000. Y'all had a major purchase last year, and that was a fire truck. Y'all did not include that in your budget, but it was financed by a loan from the bank, and that cost of that fire truck was $500,000. So, that's what caused that one to go over budget significantly because you have what was not recorded in your financial statements was the payout for that vehicle, nor the proceeds received for that vehicle from the bank. They were netted in effect, and one, I mean, y'all's financial statement was netted on zero. So, you had no gross proceeds nor gross expenditures for that purchase. And so, when I made the journaling for the fix app, I knew that was going to blow that budget category all to pieces, and it did. But you can see the loan proceeds right there at the bottom of the page in the other financial resources are $500,035. That's the amount of money that the first financial bank meant y'all to buy that, to buy that here. Some of the other categories of an over budget is y'all had more personnel in the police department this year than what y'all had originally budgeted. And so, you had $85,000 budget variance on the negative side in police relative to what your budget was. Same for code enforcement. Y'all had a, y'all enacted a lot of code enforcement activities during the course of this year that were not included originally in your budget. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but that's why your expenditures were so much higher this year than this budget. And then also, in general government, got personnel costs, primarily insurance. Insurance was a big, big negative cost to y'all relative to budget that caused that budget category to go over budget. Overall, y'all had basically a break-even budget, a negative budget of $125, and after effect of the loan proceeds and such, you had an actual surplus of $18,000, which is the third to last line item, line item in the third column. So, the general fund did, did pretty well, even, and the reason it didn't really tank, like these budget negative variances show, is because your revenues were so much higher. You can see on the revenue budget, your revenue budget was $366,000 more than what you had actually budgeted to be. And most of that is going to be in, in the sales tax, property taxes, and then the admin cost allocation from the utility fund of $189,000 plus the benefits. So, overall, it did quite well. And the fact that y'all could absorb that additional expense in the utility fund than what was budgeted to be transferred as an administrative cost amount to the general fund just so shows how well the utility fund really did this year. Because of that $200,000 surplus on page 18, that includes $490,000 transferred as an administrative cost expense to the general fund. So, basically, what the utility fund is subsidizing, subsidizing cost of general administrative expenses paid out in the general fund. And so, that's in the expenses there, about the fifth line down, fourth line down under operating expenses. Looking at your debt, it's going to be in the footnotes, and you'll see the debts that y'all incurred and retired during this, if I can find on the right page, on page, beginning on page 28. We'll do detail all of your outstanding long-term debt obligations. Of course, the top four on your certificates of obligation in footnote G that y'all have already incurred, beginning in the years 2016 and following, and then the last three are not certificates of obligation, but they're notes payable. The last one of which on page 28 is the narrative on the fire truck that was acquired in June of 2019. And the page 29 will show the activity on those long-term debt obligations, and you can see no certificates of obligations were issued. You retired $55,000 on certificates of obligations, have $811,000 remaining in the general fund. And if you go down to the business type activities, which is the utility fund, you retired $225,000 in revenue and tax payments, which are also certificates of obligations. You have $987,000 remaining on those, which, most of that is the purchase of the Abilene Foot Phantom Water. Notes payable on the general fund side, governmental activities, you incurred $500,000 of new debt, and that's again on the police car, not police car, fire truck. You retired $42,000 and have pending outstanding notes payable of $543,000, of which 500 of it is, is the fire truck because the first payment was not due until this year. Last month was, maybe it's next month, no, last month, June was, June of 2020 was the first note payment due on that. And then in the utility fund side, you have one capital lease, and you retired $15,622 on that lease and have the remaining balance of $67,000. The other long-term liabilities are going to be related to payroll, related to net pension liabilities, and the crew compensated absence is payable. And then lastly will be customer deposits, which are considered long-term liabilities, $40,000 in new customer deposits and $32,500 in higher than customer deposits. Related to your pension, y'all's pension liability went up significantly from last year to this year. It's still relatively well-funded, but in total, your, your permanent pension liability, and the footnote disclosure on it is on page 33, in that table on page 33. But your net pension liability increased from $524,000 at the beginning of the year, which is the top line in that table, the third column, to an ending liability of $845,000. And the reason it went up so much is because the investment income of that plan last year had a terrible year. The TMRS plan in the 2018-19 year did very poorly. And I'm not really understanding why it did that poorly, but of course, it's, y'all's group came with all the other cities across the state, and y'all's net investment income for the year was negative $170,000, so it actually lost $170,000 in growth for the year. And that's why, is because of that negative number, typically that number would be a positive number. That's a pretty, pretty significant hit to your pension balances, and that's what caused that liability to go up so much. Aside from that, it's still pretty well-funded because if you look at the, the pension disclosure on page 41, this shows the five years that have been required to be reported related to net pension liabilities. And in the first column on page 41, the third to last line item, that percentage number of 80.85%, that's the percent that your pension plan is funded, related to the benefits that have been promised upon retirement of your employees. And so, it's still much better off than all the state plans. You know, you think about teacher retirement system, you think about ERS, you think about TML, all the other plans that are run by the state of Texas, excluding TMRS, which is also run by the state of Texas, but it's kind of a quasi-organization separate from the state's organizations. Those pension plan balances are about 70% funded. So, y'all's pension plan, even though it's at 80.85% funded, is still in better financial position than like the teacher retirement system, which is right at 70% funded as of the same timeframe. So, you're still in, in good financial standing related to the pension plan. The state's target, a funded percent rate, which is statutorily stated in the state's actuarial evaluation reports, is 80%. And they're right now below 80%, but y'all's is right above that 80% target as far as what the statewide plans are. And so, that's not something necessarily to be concerned about, but it did significantly drive the costs of participation in the plan up this year, especially had to book those increases in those liabilities as an expense to both your general fund expenditures as well as utility fund expenditures. So, that's in part why also the personnel cost went up this year was because of that. Led to internal controls and so forth. Things are in good shape as they typically are, but if you look at the testing of internal controls, the letters on page 55, led to internal controls testing compliance with state laws and regulations, it's a clean report letter. And on page 56, we'd report last year's findings if there were any, that were not any reported last year. On page 57, we'd report this year's findings if there were any this year, and there weren't any reported this year either. You know, I know Mike called me with concern earlier in the year about why are our cash collections down so much? Why are they fluctuating so much? Well, I did a pretty detailed analysis of y'all's cash collections, and, you know, Clyde, as is any city, is a cyclical, cyclically based related to cash because you have credit card collections. When people have the option to pay with credit cards or with cash, one month they'll pull up the credit card. If they don't have cash in their pocket, they'll pay with credit card next month. Or I've got, I've got $50 in my pocket, I'll pay $50 cash. And that's what they do, and so that's why month by month, y'all's cash collections do this. But overall, across time, they pretty much normalize and average out. And so, your cash collections related to this year, to last year, and the year before and the year before that are pretty much normal year over year, even though, but if you look at it from a month-by-month slice, you'll think, my gosh, we collected $20,000 cash this month, we only collected $22,000 this month, where'd the rest go? Well, it's because they use credit cards to pay their bills that month. Because if you look at your billings and collections and any balances of your, of your billings and everything, everything ties out exactly like, like it should. So, I know y'all probably may have been somewhat concerned about that, but that's the reason why. It's because of the credit cards, the cause of it fluctuating like it is.
Very good. Thank you for that. Extra work on that. Questions or comments? That's my audit. Did that be quick enough?
Thank you.
Counsel, have any questions? Let's go. All right. We'll see none, we'll accept that report. Thank you.
Well, thank y'all.
All right. Thank you very much for all your work on that.
All right.
Thank y'all later. All right, moving on. We'll move on. What? Somebody say something? Okay. Public hearings. 8.1 is a public hearing, notice of public hearing on property located at Lot 5 in Quarter Edition, Callahan County, Texas, 109 Charnell Street. Request is for property to be replatted so it can be broken into separate lots and developed. The property is currently zoned as single-family estate. The public hearing will be held at Clyde City Hall, 222 Oak Street tonight. Any interested parties may appear at the public hearing to learn more about this case and make your opinions known. At this time, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak about this piece of property? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I will move to 8.2, another public hearing. This is notice of public hearing on substandard structures pursuant to Article 3.03 Structural Standards Code of the Clyde Code of Ordinances, and if the structures are determined to be substandard structures, possible action regarding whether the structures should be vacated, secured, repaired, removed, or demolished. The case to be heard is located at 320 Sherry Lane, Clyde, Texas. The public hearing will be held tonight at City Hall. Any interested parties may appear at the public hearing to learn more about this case and make your opinions known. Again, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this piece of property? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing. We will move on to 9.0, regular agenda. This is where 9.1, consider with possible action, the final replat of the property located at Lot 5 in the Quarter Edition, Callahan County, Texas, 109 Charnell Street. Mr. Murray?
Mr. Murray, this is the one we talked about last meeting, our last month. It's the three lots there on Charnell, and the Terry and his folks have looked at it, and it's good.
All right. Very good. Counsel, have any questions? Let's see. I'm looking here. Okay. Then if counsel has any questions, no questions or comments for Mr. Murray about this or Mr. Davis about this, I'd entertain a motion to replat this Mr. Davis about this, I'd entertain a motion to replat this property. Moving replatted as requested. Second. I have a motion by Councilman Niffen, seconded by Councilman White, to replat the property as requested. All those in favor? Pass unanimously, thank you. Moving on to 9.2, this is to consider and act upon whether structures on the following property are substandard structures pursuant to Article 303 Structural Standards Code of the Clyde Code of Ordinances, and if the structures are determined to be substandard structures, we will consider and take possible action regarding whether structures should be vacated, secured, repaired, removed, or demolished. Mr. Murray?
Mr. Murray, this is the House of Sherry, which is Office 604. Terry and Michael and their crew have looked at it and determined, they think it's a substandard structure, and they wanted y'all to look at it and see what y'all thought. And so, you have anything to say, or you just split through the, through the side of the case? So, this is a house on Sherry Lane, 320 Sherry Lane, and, like I said, it's right off.
Michael Moffett with the City of Clyde's Code Enforcement Division, and we're here to talk about 320 Sherry Lane. I'd like you to pay particular attention to this particular photo. This platform or deck in front of the house gives access to those broken windows, and kids just literally have to just step into the house. And this is all the way around the house. It's a broken house, severely dilapidated, and definitely a health and safety issue for this immediate vicinity there. This will be the east end of the house. The house is actually facing south, this is the east end. Again, the windows are broken out on it. You can see in all the photographs, it's severe dilapidation that's occurring on this trailer. The trailer is owned by an individual that has another trailer in town on Wallflower, and we're not here to hear about Wallflower, obviously, but his mother, it's my understanding, lived in this property and died, and he's not given it any attention since her death. The property is owned by another concern, so once we demolish this, we'll be able to relieve the property owner of this hindrance, and he can get something else on there and get it running. Just one snapshot of the interior, how kids are going in there and tearing the house up inside. She left all of her belongings in there, and it's really quite a mess. This is the north side of the house. This is the steps right in front of you there against that back door, which has fallen into disrepair, and is dangerous to stand on for sure. There is the picture of the steps and the danger that could occur there. They see how the trees have grown up through the walkway evidently. This is a handicap ramp that serviced this trailer. This lady, before she died, was in a wheelchair, and they built this. It's my understanding is possibly that this whole contraption was there before they moved the trailer in. They moved the trailer in behind this, about two-foot space in between this platform and the trailer, and they used HADIT block or a cement block to bridge the gap between this and the front door. So, doesn't make sense to me why she's got a handicap ramp, but she's got HADIT block from there to the front door, so. Staff recommendation for findings, the property is a public nuisance in that it is a hazard to the public health, safety, and welfare, and repair of the structure would be unreasonable. We consider this a zero value on this house, because to repair it or bring it up to code, bring it up to speed would far exceed its value. For order, we're asking that the council order to demolish, or the owner to demolish or appeal the order to District Court within 30 days, or the city may demolish. So there's our findings, and there's our order to the council.
Very good. Counsel have any questions for Mr. Moffett? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, so would counsel have an opportunity to hear that report and see those pictures? At this time, if you have no questions, I would entertain a motion to, as to whether or not to deem this a substandard structure according to our codes.
I move that this structure is a substandard.
Okay. Second. I have a motion by Councilman Slade, seconded by Councilman White, to deem this structure a substandard structure. Recalling if we did this before, do we now have a separate vote?
Right.
Okay. Then, moving for a separate vote with...
Is there a vote on that one?
Oh, yeah. Get ahead of myself, sorry, I was excited. That's right behind my property there, by the way, so I don't think it gone to. Okay, with this being a motion and seconded that this is a substandard structure, all those in favor? Pass unanimously, thank you very much. Seeing that this has been deemed a substandard structure by Clyde City Council, at this time, we entertain a motion to move forward with our recommended findings on this as far as requesting the owner to demolish or argue that point.
Make a motion to move on to the recommended findings.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman White, seconded by Councilman Niffen, to move forward with our developments, our staff's findings, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, thank y'all very much. Moving on to 9.3, consider with possible action concerning new contract between the City of Clyde and Westex Connect. Mr. Murray?
Mr. Murray, the Westex Connect, they have our wireless internet. Mr. Richard Kemp is here to talk for Westex Connect. Do you have any questions for him? Their contract is up as of this month, and what they do is they have a contract to have the antennas on the water towers. There's two antennas, one on Greenbrier and one at the city yard, and the, it's a five-year contract, it's time to either renew it or not renew it, but there's a lot of folks that appreciate Westex here in Clyde, and so we want them to continue to provide internet to folks, so, but we need to update the contract a little bit. It was $200 in the free wireless connection five years ago. It's now been changed to just $400 a tower and no wireless connection, so that was the Westex agreed with the city that we just soon swapped checks for it instead of trying to do some trading and stuff. Check with other cities, the $400 a tower, or $200 a tower, so $400 for the two towers, there's cities that just give it to them, which is unusual, and then there's cities that charge 500 a year, found one city that charged $400 per tower. So the $200 per tower is about in the middle of what the range is. The only other addition to it is the, their, Westex is going to be stringing some fiber, it has been, and there's some discussion about whether or not they need to pay franchise fees like other companies that use the right-of-way, so that's in the contract. Talked to Mr. Aminet, the Vice President, he wanted to do a little change. There's been a couple of changes to what Eileen, the city attorney, put together originally. One of them is tighten it up of any other companies that may go on the tower that wouldn't interfere with their signals, that's no problem. And then, then it was just the addition of the name of the company that's doing the fiber, so that's the contract. So it's, have you got any thoughts, questions, ideas?
Well, we like Clyde, so we want to stay.
I got about 600 customers running up.
Got a few, a lot of customers here.
At this point, we're looking at, we'd like to have this contract signed, and Mr. Aminet, I understand, thank you, Mr. Kemp, for being here tonight representing Westex Connect. So, we have, I mean, our attorney put this up, Mr. Aminet has a copy of it. We're ready to sign this contract now. There's one or two small things that need to be changed, the name adding?
Yes, they've been added. I would like for Eileen to look at it and make sure it's perfectly right, but they've been added. The coverage you have now is what it shouldn't say unless Eileen changes, or rearranged the words or something like that.
Counsel, have any questions concerning our contract, or the, this, or anything they'd like to ask Mr. Kemp?
And the right-of-way question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that included?
It is.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there's some discussion about whether or not Westex needs to pay it or not. City attorney says that she believes they need to, and they're looking into whether or not they actually need to. So it says if required by state law. So it's kind of up to, you know, if for some reason Westex can prove that they don't need to pay franchise, right now they don't need to pay anything, because there's no revenue being generated off of it. But when the fiber is completed and they start generating revenue, just like Windstream or Atmos or AEP, they have to pay some franchise taxes.
Counsel have any other questions or comments? Then at this time, I would entertain a motion for us to enter into this contract with Westex Connect. Or not enter into it, if y'all don't want to.
No, I move that we enter into it for the benefit of our citizens who are happy with the services, and...
Okay. I have a motion to enter, do I have a second? All right, I have a motion by Councilman Kaufman, seconded by Councilman Niffen, to enter into this contract with Westex Connect as it's written and reviewed, and any other questions? If not, all those in favor? Pass unanimously, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Kemp, for being here. Appreciate your help and appreciate y'all's service out there. Okay, moving on to 9.4, this is consider with possible action. I have a note here, so, thank you. The use of eminent domain to condemn property for a 7.5847 acre water pipeline easement over the land in Callahan County, Texas, owned by Guitar Land and Cattle Company. Mr. Murray?
Mr. Mayor, so y'all know that we have all the easements for the pipeline except for this one. We've been in negotiations with them for, before my time. We've tried to renew negotiations and get this easement finalized, but at this point, well, at this point, the landowner's not, has said no. I believe there may be some negotiations very recently, but in the meantime, we had to begin the eminent domain process, which I know nobody particularly likes. I think that's kind of what spurred the renewed interest, and so, in order to finish the pipeline, we have to have that easement, and so, it's the only way we can access it. So I would suggest we, if we want to move forward with the pipeline, which I know we do, then we do this process.
All right, counsel have any questions for Mr. Murray about this?
Hold on, hold on. New negotiations still?
I just got told about it today, that there may be some, yeah, it's, it hadn't been completed, there, it's kind of a...
Still far-fetched, though?
No, I don't think it's as far-fetched as it was. I don't know, actually. I think it's just...
If we move forward at this point, that puts us further along, and we can stop proceedings if agreement is reached?
Absolutely.
All right, very good.
I move we use eminent domain to condemn property for a 7.5847 acre water pipeline easement over the land in Callahan County, Texas, owned by Guitar Land and Cattle Company AEP.
Second. All right. On this one, we actually will have to do an individual vote. I'd have everyone recorded, so I'll ask each of the council members individually. Councilman Kaufman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Niffen?
Yes.
Councilman Slade?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Thank you. With those four recorded votes, this motion will pass. Thank you. Moving on to 9.5, consider with possible action the release of easement record as instrument number 151634 in volume 412, page 867 of the Official Public Records of Jones County, Texas. Mr. Murray?
Mr. Mayor, so this is another one of the waterline easements that we had recorded. There had to be a slight change to get it lined up with the other ones that we've recently completed. This one was actually, so this one was an easement for something that we don't need anymore. So they are suggesting that we release the easement, so we don't need it anymore.
Very good. Counsel have any questions concerning this item? At this time, I'd entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the release of easement.
I shall move.
I have a motion by Councilman Slade, seconded by Councilman Niffen, to allow the mayor to authorize, authorize the mayor to sign the release of easement. All those in favor? Pass unanimously, thank y'all very much. Moving on to 10.0, city administrators' report. Mr. Murray?
Quick things. Are y'all available for a budget workshop next week, Tuesday specifically, lunchtime? Be nice to get together and talk about long-term plans and things like that for a budget workshop.
I'm in.
You're in, I appreciate it.
Did you say lunchtime?
Yes, ma'am, lunchtime Tuesday, the...
Can you make... Yeah, great.
Tuesday at lunch, next Tuesday at lunch.
No, Mike, on, we discussed earlier, my day off is on Monday, that week.
Oh, my goodness, okay. Well...
That's a really tight day for me, too.
Okay, okay. Well, y'all be thinking about a good day that would work for a budget workshop. We need to get together and do, just do some, like I said, some long-term planning.
We have the following Tuesday, however, that puts us a week out, a week later, but I'm off that following Tuesday.
Take what we can get.
That actually works better for me because of the tax rate stuff, the 28?
Good, yes.
Because we can name the tax, that actually works better for me, for the tax budget stuff.
Whether or not, Danny?
I'm sorry, Councilman White? Should be, that should be all right.
I think I can do it.
Okay.
Perfect. 28?
I'm asking my authority to, though.
Y'all think about it, we have, now we have two weeks to think about, so let me, I'll give it.
2/30 chocolate.
2/30. I know Mr. Niffen loves these kind of workshops. The second thing is, I got a treat for you. I know most of y'all may have already seen it, but the new fire truck is outside, and juxtaposed beside the old fire truck, so 1984 model is exiting the service, and 2028, 19? 19 is entering the service, so, once this is over with, if y'all'd like to go look at the new fire truck, it's out there, shiny, as opposed, other than the...
It's almost right now.
Well, I was gonna say, other than the ashes and yesterday.
Yeah, we've had a lot of fire, thank you to our fire department. Great work you guys are doing, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I didn't mean to butt it.
No, sir, that's all I have.
All right. Then, counsel's had an opportunity to look over your financial statement, you don't have any questions about that? Then, all right, I have a motion for adjournment by Councilman White.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Kaufman, all those in favor? You are free to leave. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here tonight, we appreciate y'all's opportunity or appreciate your willingness to come out and hear your words, thank y'all very much.
I have many dollars, I'm going to put fire...